...opportunity to take advantage of some economies of scale. So we will, I've discussed this with Dr. Bowden, and we will be presenting to you at your next board meeting in a couple of weeks, a retainer agreement with a Tallahassee-based lawyer and law firm, statewide law firm, the Rumberger Kirk Law Firm, who's, one of whose partners is a man named Leonard Dietzen, who is, happens to be the Swanee County School Board lawyer, but he is an experienced litigator and is already signed up, I believe, as of last week to represent, I think it's about 15 other school districts, including Leon County, obviously in Tallahassee. And I am told that a similar retainer agreement's being placed out there for the Palm Beach County School Board, the Escambia County School Board, and one or two others. So he anticipates representing approximately 20, plus or minus a couple, school districts. So obviously, we will be paying a share of his bill, but only say 1/18th or 1/20th. That seems to me to be the best way to proceed. We can't not respond, since this is a complaint for damages, but that hopefully will keep our financial exposure to a minimum. So I just wanted to let you know that this is out there. We haven't been served yet. If, Madam Chair, you get served, please let me know. It's my understanding that other school boards have not yet been served. This takes some time, although it's also my understanding that the Department of Education has been served either today or yesterday, so things are started. But we thought it was the best thing to do would be to get a local lawyer in Tallahassee who has some familiarity with this, who we can also share expenses with.
Yes.
Hopefully, the individual school districts won't be in the case too long, but we shall see. But we wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the hearing of citizens. If you would like to speak, please pick up a card in the back of the, back of the chambers and bring it to our assistant, Zoe Marshall. You will have three minutes to speak. And please remember civility. With these two numbers, they should know that. Let's see. Dr. Robison? Pick it up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Once again, Chair Zucker, board members, Superintendent Dr. Bowden, Staff Attorney, Mr. Harding, and also to our young man who was representing our students here today. My name is Dr. Lewis Robinson, and I reside at 3935 Trentwood Place in Sarasota, Florida. Board members, I heard the letter that was read a moment ago about a chair, and I'm actually astounded that in the midst of conflict, it becomes convenient to put the lives of children and families on the line through an unprecedented letter from our so-called state delegation. Some years ago, this board, and many of you were probably, obviously, were not members of this board, but some years ago, a decision was made to select an oversight committee whose sole purpose was to ensure that the referendum dollars were used and administered That committee consisted of volunteers and is known as the Financial Advisory Committee, and of which I am a member. Now, as volunteers, we have no say other than advising and making recommendations based on the referendum. The citizens of this community love and enjoy this district's status among its peers statewide. I have no doubt about that. And if you have any doubt about it, you should simply walk downtown Sarasota and take a look at the new construction and all the new buildings that are happening in the housing industry in this community. Be that as it is, we still have a lot, a lot of work to do with many students in our I would ask that you keep the politics out of the lives of our children and learning in the classrooms. The teachers are the adults, the children are the learners. Unless I'm incorrect, I don't think that one member of that delegation actually pays one red cent to the success of the referendum in this school district. $300,000 to bring in $55 million for students in this district is a pretty good investment, if you ask me. Lastly, there's an, excuse me, lastly, there's an old adage that goes like this: If it ain't fixed, I'm sorry, if it ain't broken, then don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Dan DeLeo.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dan DeLeo. I'm an attorney at Shoemaker Loop and Kendrick. And as I think most of you know, I've been a member of the Financial Advisory Committee for about 10 years. As Mr. Robison indicated, that's a citizens' organization, businesspeople like me and others, whose job it is to examine certain issues and make recommendations to the board. We did that as it relates to this particular issue that you're going to discuss in a moment, and we recommended, and I would note that it was unanimous, that the referendum should remain on the special election and not move to November. I volunteered hundreds of hours on behalf of the school as a member of the Financial Advisory Committee over the last 10 years, making recommendations like that recommendation. I'm also the president of something called Citizens for Better Schools. As the board knows, that's a grassroots organization that's responsible for putting on the referendum. That is, we run the campaign, we buy the T-shirts, we knock on doors. It's a grassroots citizens' organization made up of businesspeople of the chamber and others who care about the quality of public schools. So I ran the campaign last year, last cycle, and I'm doing it again right now. The campaign for the referendum's going to be in March, and we're beginning that process already. It's a difficult process, and it requires a tremendous amount of work and commitment from a lot of people. So I was in charge also of fundraising, the money necessary to put on the campaign for the last two referendums, and I'm responsible for doing that again this year, for this cycle. I've also volunteered hundreds of hours on behalf of the referendum over the last 10 years that I've been involved in it, and I've done that because it's critical to the future of this community. Now, I stand before you uniquely qualified to speak to the issue that you're going to talk about here in a moment. And here's what I want to tell you. I have a simple message. The best way to defeat the referendum, to have it lose, is to move it from a special to the November election. I'm here tonight to tell you that the referendum is significantly more likely to fail, that you put it in jeopardy in a general election. And that's true for three reasons. Number one, it costs more in a general election. It would cost approximately two to three times more to get our message out in a very crowded general election, in that cacophony of issues and candidates. Number two, I simply can't raise the money I need to get my message out in a general election. And there's nobody in the county who's more qualified to opine on that issue than myself. Number three, the competing issues that are deemed more important in a general election crowd out our message. The referendum would appear at the bottom of the ballot, and what the media believes is more important, national and state races, crowd out the referendum issue. But in fact, there's no issue that's more important than the referendum. I'll close with this. If it was truly about the approximately $330,000, why not simply have the legislators who wrote that letter draft a piece of legislation, and I'll volunteer to do it for free, that lengthens the time of the referendum from four years to 10 years? You would eliminate that need to pay the approximately $330,000. So I implore you not to move it to the general election. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the hearing of citizens. There are no additions or corrections to the agenda. May I please have a motion?
Move the consent agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no names. We have to take a voice vote because our computers are not working tonight. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. And it passes 5 to 0. No items. Okay, we're under new business?
I move the approval to advertise new school board policy 5.202 regarding post-secondary enrollment programs.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Please vote verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. And it passes 5-0. We are now at 20. Approval of calendar year 2018 Employee Group Benefit Insurance Rates and Fees. May I have a motion?
I move the approval of the 2018 Employee Group Benefit Insurance Rates and Fees.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Wait. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. And I wanted to thank Lynn Peterson and Mitzi Corcoran for the presentation this afternoon. I know that is a lot of things that you are working on simultaneously, and so I appreciate you taking the time and going through that. I know that we had a detailed discussion on, you know, the purpose of the rates. Certainly, I think that, I know as I speak for myself here, but raising any increased rate is something we take seriously, but if you look at the trajectory and the comparison of other companies and public entities with what the rates they are facing, I think that we're in a very, very good shape. I do look forward to future conversations as we discuss the, whether or not we want to move forward with the clinics. I think that there's a lot more navigation and areas that we need to dive in and be very careful of that. Of course, that we want to protect the money that we have and not be exposed, and I know that was some of the stuff that we talked about earlier today. So, but again, I just wanted to thank you for the work, because I know taking on the self-insured fund was a, it was an ominous task, and it's been, you know, a learning process for many of us, so I really greatly appreciate your work.
Mr. Robinson?
I also want to thank Lynn Peterson for providing information to me, Dr. Bowden for asking, answering my questions and making sure that I get things in the format that's helpful. And I especially want to thank Mitzi, because I know having a CPA in the board is pulling her hair out. I'm sorry, Mitzi, it just, it just in the DNA, so, but I do want to thank Mitzi for putting up with me, because the Lord knows that ain't easy. So I just want to tell you, thank you, Mitzi.
All right, there's a vote in a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and it passes 5-0. May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution for authorizing a referendum?
That the school board pursuant to Section 1011.71 herein to Florida statutes adopt a resolution directing the Board of County Commissioners of Sarasota County to call an election for March 20th, 2018, at which the electors within the school district may approve an ad valorem tax millage in the amount of 1 mil per year for three years, July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, for operating expenses as authorized by Section 1011.71 herein nine Florida statutes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
I, you know, I received this letter over the weekend. There were two surprises over the weekend. One was the letter, and one was Christian Ziegler's survey. I'll talk about the letter first. This letter was sent to us, and I did get a call about it coming from one of the members, but I will say this: Never have I seen a letter coming from a delegation before. Four of five members of this delegation also are the delegation that serves Manatee County. Manatee County is going for a referendum. They voted to go for a referendum on March 20th, the same day that we are going, special election. They did not receive this letter. And this letter is political fodder, as far as I'm concerned. I also feel that, you know, there are special sessions that the legislature has of the cost of $60,000 or $70,000 a day that have been incurred, three of them for $1.1 million in 2015. And again, this year, we had a three-day special session. So I find that this is a little bit disingenuous as well, so I'm very concerned about that. But more concerned is the survey slash email that went out to all Republican operatives on a Saturday afternoon that said, "Should we have the referendum in March?" It didn't say what year. Or, "Should we have the referendum in a general election in November?" That was created and sent out to create confusion. I got several emails from people saying, "Let's not go in March, let's go in 2018." It is my job as a school board member to work on any policy or any issue that will help the students of Sarasota County. And since the very first referendum, I have had the pleasure of working on those referendums. And it is my job, as I see it, to help make sure that that referendum passes. I think it's all of our jobs. And we've always been very careful about this time of year, every four years, to, so we saw call in the wagons and make sure that, we try to get a message out that's really positive on all fronts, and that concerns me as well. But I really think that this was put out to confuse people. It happened again in 2014, so I wasn't really surprised by it. It would have been nice if there'd been a date. We do have confusion out there. But just so everyone knows, we have to go in a special election in March 20th of 2018 because we sunset at the end of June of 2018. If we don't go next year in March and we waited till 2018, what will we do? We'd lose $55 million, and that's 15% of our operating budget, so everybody would take a 15% pay cut. I'm not advocating that, but I am not advocating for confusion. And it pains me to see things like this happening in our school community, and it pains me to see people on this board who are acting as irresponsibly as I feel this is. I know the good things that our referendum does for our children. I know the good things it does for our teachers and our staff and our parents and our community. The community is solidly behind this referendum, solidly behind this school board and this superintendent, and I am very grateful to be a part of that and to be a part of this great district. We're an A district, and part of the reason why we are an A district is because of the money that we get extra, because Florida does not pay well for education. We all know we rank about 40th in the nation. That ain't good, folks. And what I really think is that we all need to circle the wagons around and be positive and go and do this for four years, not three years, but four years. So I will be voting against this. It doesn't cost anymore to do a special election next March for three years or four years. It costs the same amount of money. And why not leave ourselves flexibility? Last year, the legislature attempted to change the law, saying we had to go in a general election in November. So we still have time if that happens. We can go in 2020. We have flexibility to do that. But I am not ready to say we made a mistake in having special elections. Special elections have cost us $1.1, $1.2 million total for four elections, and in that amount of money, that is about 15 one-hundredths of 1% of the money that we have generated in revenue coming to our operating budget. So I thank the community, I appreciate their vote, I appreciate everyone who's been involved in our schools, in our, in our parents, in this community, to make this pass. I would love it if it was 10 years. I would think that would be great. We did try that once, and it didn't pass, but, but it would be great. But I would really not be honest if I voted for this.
Mrs. Brown?
Well, I would like to thank the members of the Financial Advisory Board who came today and to explain how this, I mean, they're the ones who are supposed to have the oversight of how we spend these dollars, and they've actually took it a little step further, and they look at some of our other dollars and how we spend them too. But they discussed this, and they came back with, as they said, "We should have the special election in March, and we should have it for four years." Mrs. Goodwin has explained why we couldn't have it in November of 2017, because there's no election. And if we wait till November of 2018, we will have missed one full year of the revenue, which will be about $55, $60 million, and that would be a great expense. I too am sorry, this has become a political issue. You know, we've discussed this at the board workshops, back and forth, and, you know, I guess we know where we're at on it. But I think it was hubris of our delegation to then turn around and insert themselves into this discussion, and to say that they don't like how taxpayer dollars are being spent on a special election, when, as Ms. Goodwin has pointed out, there was an extended session because they couldn't get the budget passed in time, and then they had to have a special session because they couldn't pass the bill to enact the constitutional amendment that they were supposed to enact, and also the gambling pavilion that provided lots of funds, I mean, millions of dollars of funds to the school district. So for them to tell us that we're wasting money when we can show how the money that we're spending helps, and again, I think the confusion that we're giving the public, again, by telling them, "Oh, have it in March." We can't have it in March, and I think our whole board understands why we can't have it in March. That's why we're looking at three years. But we can easily have this, as we discussed, for the four years, and then in 2020, discuss having an extension for three years past of where we were. That's why I would like to amend the motion to reinsert the language that was printed on the agenda, calling for a four-year extension through June of 2022.
I need a second on that.
You asked for discussion and a vote?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's where I'm... I have two names up on the, do I vote on the motion first or let the people talk?
I think, I think you have a motion and a motion to amend that motion. You can have discussion on both of them, then vote on the motion to amend.
I know that part, I just wasn't sure about the speaking. Okay. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. Well, see, I think I respect the various opinions up here, and I greatly appreciate the volunteer work that the Financial Advisory Committee has put in over a very long time, and it is very valuable. So I hope that my action does not undermine what value I believe you guys bring to this community. However, I do believe there is a difference of opinion, and I believe that it is my duty, as I speak to a number of people in the community over a series of time, that they are tremendously supportive of this school district, they are tremendously proud to live in Sarasota County, where we have successful schools, and that, however, over a series of time, whether not just this is not a local discussion, this has gone beyond that, and it's all around the state, as far as the validity of special elections. And if you look at the purpose of it, it is truly to hear, have voters' input, and then go to the cost. And so I personally think, when we have 15.5% voter turnout in 2014, when I know that this community supports our schools, we have the opportunity to write by our very generous community and move and be proactive, especially as we look at the environment that is occurring and the sentiment and frustration that is occurring, not just here locally, but statewide. And we dodged a bullet, if you will, because last session, there was indeed legislation filed, to not allow special elections to take place, or we, I tried to see us move it to a general in 2016, and was, unfortunately, was not successful. And we, like I said, dodged a bullet last session, but I can see it is certainly coming down the pipes. And what I think, we have the opportunity to be proactive, send a sign, because ultimately, Tallahassee acts when school districts fail to lead, and I feel like we have an opportunity to lead. And I believe that we will be able to, our, our community is very familiar with our referendum dollars and the value it brings, and therefore, I think we're missing an opportunity to continue to work with our partners up in Tallahassee. I recognize, and quite frankly, I think that as legislators, they are also representing taxpayers as well, and so if they, and they know this is a conversation that continues to go through up in Tallahassee, and it had bipartisan support across the board, so I just think we are missing an opportunity. And I think when you look at the sheer numbers of turnout, especially as this momentum and conversation comes, I think, quite frankly, you may be putting the referendum overall at risk. And yes, we know we have to have it in March of 2018, but the duration is where we can lead. And I'm disappointed to see that we, that we won't be doing that today.
Mr. Robinson?
First thing I want to say is, it's possible for us to disagree on an issue and be cordial and be respectful. I disagree with my fellow board member by saying that there are members up here that are being irresponsible. We are simply disagreeing on a policy, and I think we can be respectful in that. But before I make my statements, I want to, just want to ask Art Hardy a question that has nothing to do with the timing. So today, we were talking to a charter school, and it came up about sharing referendum dollars and not sharing referendum dollars, and they have people outside the county, and you had once told us about the Indian River lawsuit. Is there any way of crafting, does the referendum now provide protection, or is there a way of crafting the referendum in such a way so that we don't have to share referendum dollars with charter schools who have students outside Sarasota County? Do you understand the question?
I understand the question. I'm not sure that I can give you a definitive answer on that. We've talked about the Indian River decision, which, in essence, that circuit judge, not binding on us, although that's the only decision we have from a Florida court, has said that referendum dollars are part of the operating expenses of the FEFP. There are certainly arguments against that, but that's not what the judge said, and therefore, under the charter school statute, 1,002.33, those dollars had to be shared with charter schools. There was no discussion in that opinion about where the students are coming from, although, as we know, students even more recently, last year, inter-district transfers has now been encouraged. So I think it would be difficult, at least before that judge, a different judge could have a different opinion about it, but before that judge, to make the distinction you are making, although if we were to do that, ultimately, that would likely be challenged, I would think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just thought that that was a relevant issue, because we've been talking about that this morning. But going back to the timing, I understand that legislative delegation letter has, you know, has upset people. But you've got to remember, we had members of our board who wrote letters to the delegation, so to have them write a letter back to us doesn't seem that far out of whack with me. If somebody wants to interject on, I did not support that, that letter being written as fact, but if somebody wants to, if I have the right to write somebody a letter asking them to do something, then gosh darn it, how am I going to say that they don't have to write a letter back to me, asking me to do something? I also think that if we go to, go in front of somebody, and that's just human nature, if you go in front of somebody and you ask them for 15 items, and then they ask you for one, and you tell them no, you're not practicing good interpersonal skills. That's just my own personal belief as a ghost, that letter. But you can give the letter as much or as little weight as you want, but these are the same people that we're going to go to and talk. But going back to the timing again, sometimes you've got to think about, not just where we're going, because that's what we're talking about, not this election, we're talking about the next elections, but how we got here. You've got to remember that we didn't have to have this election here in March. In 2016, it came in front of the board to have the election in 2016 November. We could have the election 2016 November and then been moving forward and not had it in November. So remember why we have it in March. And going back to what Miss Ziegler was saying, there was a bill that came up this year, and if that bill would have passed, we would have been sitting here without that $55 million. And I think having this referendum dollars is too important to gamble like this. We run the risk. This has to do with risk tolerances. We run the risk of in 2021, the legislature passing a law saying you cannot have special elections, and we will be out, probably by then, over $60 million in referendum dollars. And there's nothing we can do about it. We will be sitting there with that gap. And so think about that. So you've got, we're not, we have to do it in March because we didn't, we didn't take the opportunity in 2016, and everybody's saying we don't have any opportunity. And everybody's saying we don't have any option. You've got to think about the option you had in the past. And then we could be finding ourselves in 2022 saying we have to do it in March. But it's only because of the actions we've took in the past. And so we run the risk. It has to do with risk tolerance. How much are you willing to gamble on this referendum? Are you willing to gamble that the state legislature, the same state legislature who said, I don't want special elections, so you know that they're predisposed to not having special elections? We run the risk of them taking this right away from us and us losing that $55 million. And that would be truly devastating to us, at least for me. I understand different people have different risk tolerances. My risk tolerance, I don't believe it's irresponsible. My risk tolerance is more on a conservative issue. I want to do everything I can to ensure the continuation of the referendum. And so for me, I'm going to vote against the change. But I will vote for the addition, for the actual referendum at the end. But I also think it's very important that we remain staying civil, we be respectful to each other, and that we all are unanimous. I think that coming out and us all supporting the referendum is very important. And being bickering amongst ourselves does not help the referendum one iota. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
I'd like to close on my amendment to move it to change it back to the four years. I actually think that a lot of the things that Mr. Erickson said...
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, I keep calling him Erickson. I agree with... You know, the legislature can make those changes. But I think that's all the more reason, and that we shouldn't be wasting money. Again, all the more reason, if we're going to put this out there, let's do it for the four years. It only makes sense to do it for the four years. If, in fact, we want to make the change, we can look at 2020 and do it, extend it for three years in 2020, and then we'll be on the November timeline. It just concerns me, you know, some of the same people that are telling me, that I'm getting emails for, telling me, oh, to move the date. I mean, these are some of the same people that told me they didn't support the referendum in the first place. I understand, and I believe wholeheartedly that Bridget feels this in heart... We have a difference of opinion. We both, and all five of us, want to see our school district continue. We've got a difference of opinion on this. We'll vote and we'll move on. But I really don't like confusing the public on this. There's no way we are going to have an election in November of 2018. Because that's off the table, because we'll miss a year's of funding. So basically, we're talking, we're going to do it three years or four years. I say, let's do it four years now. Take advantage of the money that we're going to be spending on this. And if we need to make a change in 2020, we can make a change and extend it for three years from there. And that's why I think doing it for four years now makes better sense. And I would ask you to support this and readdress the timing back in 2020.
Mrs. Goodwin?
I agree. I agree. I think we need to focus on the four years. We need to focus on the positive. And there are lots of positive things about you, Mr. Robinson, that I do love. But I really think that, you know, this has got my dander up a bit because I think that it has created a lot of... When Dr. Richard Swire, who was my nemesis in 2010 at every debate I did in the community, sends me an email this weekend and says, please don't go in March, please go in November of 2018, I know there's confusion out there because he's a very smart man. So I really would hope that we will go forward with this. We will be positive because this is about kids. This is about our children. This is about all the best things that we can do for children in Sarasota County. And it is such a pleasure to be involved with this district. And it is such a pleasure to go out and talk to people about the referendum that we will have in March. It is a real pleasure to be a part of that. So I agree that we need to go for four years. And we can always circle around if things happen in the legislature.
No, first, I would like to comment. I agree with two of my colleagues that this has to be for four years. That does give us an opportunity, not only to put it on the general election, if we choose to do that, but also if it happens to fail on the general election, we can come around and do it back in March. We will have the opportunity to be able to do that. So this is giving us much more flexibility. And I think it's the flexibility that we need. And to tie us into a three-year referendum. This referendum is too important to us. And I'm sorry, when I listen to Tallahassee tell us that we have to do what they say we have to do, it doesn't make sense. We are constitutional officers. We are able to do this. This is our right, and we are granted this in the Constitution. So let's stop playing games and give us a right for what we have a right to do. And this is our right constitutionally to do this. We are going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say yes.
Yes.
Aye, excuse me, aye. And the chair votes aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion passes three to two. The amendment passes.
Now we vote on the motion.
Now we're voting on the motion?
I haven't spoken for the motion, the unannounced motion.
You can speak. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. I will be supporting the motion for the referendum. I think it's very important for the school district that we get this referendum dollars. I think that I can see every day what it does. And if you need to understand what this referendum does, you can... All you've got to do is look at the contrast between Manatee and Sarasota and how we reacted to the hurricane. Whether you look at having to make makeup days because we have the 30 days extra that we were able to incorporate and still get the 900 hours. You can look at the quality of our staff in the time of emergency. I've said this before. It wasn't that we just have education leaders. We have leaders. And it just isn't just the principals administration. It goes down to the custodians and the facilities. We hire the best. We have the money to train them. And we're able to do all these kinds of things because of the referendum. It's not just the dollars that the referendum represents. It's the commitment from the community to the school district that gives that sense of pride to our employees, that they understand that the community is behind them, the community supports them. And not only that, but we support the community in times of need in Hurricane Irma. So I not only will... I'm not going to support the referendum. I'm going to strongly support the referendum. So I'm going to be out there advocating. And so I hope that this vote is unanimous.
We are now voting on the original motion. Excuse me. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. I am certainly disappointed, as we discussed, and I think that's no shock. And I feel as though we missed an opportunity. But I also agree in the value in this referendum. I see it every single day. I'd like to see us tighten some additional things up as far as separating it out of a general fund and programmatically tracking it from a standpoint to... Really, if you look at the language in the resolution, it actually... And in order to really have a real conversation of whether or not this is going to be continued to be put on a ballot, you should... The language in the resolution indicates that we do, in fact, have to illustrate the impact of the specific dollars that we would be levying. So I think there's some strengthening that can be done there. But I do believe that it's important for us to share our opinions and represent the variety of opinions that are in this district. And I think, like I said, I'm disappointed to see that we are kicking the can down the road, if you will. But I do believe that, at the end of the day, I want this district to know that all of us support them in the work that they do. So I will be supporting this motion.
We are voting on the original motion now.
As amended. As amended.
No, we have voted on the amended motion already.
Right.
So we're voting on it... I'm sorry.
You approved the amendment.
Yes.
So you're now voting on the original motion as amended. So that we are clear. You're voting on the resolution as it's written, which is for four years.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it passes five to zero. Is there anything else to come before this board? Do any comments? Sorry. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. I have two topics that I want to address in general. And because I can't discuss this with the... Well, first, I'll take the first one first. I would like to, especially in reflection of some of the conversations that took place here today. And I have raised concerns as to the benefit and value of using a lobbyist, but especially if we work... If we don't recognize that we need to work hand in hand with our partners, even when we don't agree all the time, that I don't know what the value is of sending a lobbyist to Tallahassee. I read the contract, and it appears that we are able to cancel the contract, or to, excuse me, terminate the contract as long as it doesn't fall within, after the first committee week and at the end of session. So we would be in between that moment. But I'd like to take a serious look at the value of whether or not we're able to continue with a lobbyist until we can really have a cohesive partnership with our members of the delegation and legislature in Tallahassee. Second, so I guess I don't know, Mr. Hardy, how that works as far as I have the contract here. But if we were to move to terminate and be approved, for example, it would be notified and that the termination day would be at the end of session? Is that correct?
I would have to... I have not looked at that contract in some time. I'd have to see what the termination provision says. Obviously, the board would have to vote to do that. So that would need to be on an agenda to consider that.
Okay.
And procedurally, I just have to look at...
And so I can share that with... And I can bring it up at the next meeting, formal, because I don't know if I'll have a majority of board members willing to add it to an agenda item. But I wanted to give you a heads up that I think it's worth evaluating it because I don't... I believe that there's continuous elements in which undermine our ability to get some of the priorities we've listed there done.
I think committee meetings have already begun.
That was my point, exactly. They have.
Mr. Robinson?
I don't know... I think, Dr. Bo... My issue is separate from hers. Are they done with that?
Well, I have an individual board member who has requested that an item be added to a future agenda. And I need to know if that is the will of the board. And so I believe a motion is in order to direct the superintendent to bring forth an item canceling the contract and see if it has second and support from the board.
I move that we bring forward on the next agenda item to... I'm sorry, next board meeting to terminate the contract we currently have with our lobbyist, Capital City Consulting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, before or after the discussion, but before the vote, you should give the public the opportunity to comment.
Okay. Mrs. Brown?
You know, I thought we were moving forward. I would really respectfully ask the maker of this to withdraw this motion. We lost on one thing, or some of... And to throw oil on the fire is not a good thing. You know, we're going to have our workshop, where we're going to kind of work together to try to... Boardmanship training. You know, I would ask that you... Because we can't eliminate the contract this year. They've already started. So we're talking about doing it for next year. And to cancel a contract that we can't stop this year anyway, and he'll be working this year regardless of what we do, I think it sends a very poor message to our lobbyists to tell them, it doesn't matter, you don't have to work this year because we're canceling your contract next year. I think that's a very poor thing to be doing. And I would respectfully ask that the motion be withdrawn.
Mr. Robinson?
Just on the surface, I generally feel that if a board member wants to bring something up for the agenda, it's not something people have... I know people have said, well, if someone does it all the time, it becomes, clogs down. It's not a process that's been abused in the past. And so I think that, as a fellow board member, if a fellow board member wants to bring something up, and if you don't agree with what she's bringing up, then you can vote it down when it comes up for the agenda item. But if somebody asks to bring something up, I think that, as a general rule, I can say this much. If anybody here on the floor wants to bring something up to the agenda, as a general rule, you have a second. You have a standing second on this board for anything somebody wants to bring up for the agenda item. I just want to let you know that. Second thing is, is going a little bit deeper into her motion is... Is if we're going to... And I brought this up when we had the legislative agenda. I said, if we're going to vote on this legislative agenda, then we need to refrain from attacking the state legislators. We need to play nice in the sandbox. Because if you're going to be sticking... Let me make sure I get the quote right. Don't stick the... Don't put your... Let me make sure I get it right.
Don't poke them in the eye.
Don't poke the judge in the eye right before you ask him to rule in your favor. Thank you. Trying to remember. And if you're going to poke the judge in the eye right before you ask him to rule in your favor, there's no reason to hire an attorney. Okay? So that's the analogy that I'm giving. So if we're going to continue to poke them in the eye because we have disagreements, and we are constitutional officers, and we have the ability to disagree with the state legislature if we want to, absolutely, I agree with Caroline Zucker. She says, we're allowed to have home rule. We're constitutionally elected. We have the right to do that. Just because you have the right and power to do something doesn't necessarily mean you should do it. And if you're going to go to people and constantly ask them for favors and constantly berate them while you do it, the chances of success in doing that is minimized. That's just human nature, that if you go around and you talk ill of people, and the... But then also ask them for a myriad of favors, the chances of them actually acting upon those favors is greatly diminished. That's just... I mean, we're adults here, and we understand how life works. So... But again, my general rule is if a board member wants to bring something up, I don't care who it is, Caroline, Shirley, Jane, Bridget, as a standing rule, if you want to bring something to the agenda, I respect you enough. I believe enough in teamwork. We need to work together. I have no problem about you bringing it up. And that allows that person to have discussion about why it is that they want to move this forward. And then at that point, if you don't want to agree with them, don't agree with them. But I think you should give your fellow board members enough respect that you allow them to at least move something forward to the next meeting.
Mrs. Ziegler?
And thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Robinson, because my purpose was to move it forward for review. And I think that, of course, I did review this. I've reviewed it before, and I know what the terms are from terminating it and the termination clause. But I do want... I think it would behoove us to have a conversation and review what our strategies are and what we're getting out of it. Because I think that it is important that, again, you do not have to agree with every single person up in Tallahassee. But we should be mindful of looking at every opportunity to verbally, I don't know, bash them is the only word I can think of. And I have concerns around that. I think that we spend $47,000 for a lobbyist, and I want to make sure that that ROI is solid. So I would like to see it at least brought forward if, to another, as an agenda item, at the very least, at a workshop. But I would like to see it something that we review.
I would not like us to bring it forward because I do not believe that we... We have a lobbyist, and he's starting work now for us. We're going to tell him, we're going to review your contract because we're not sure we want to keep you, to keep you, and we expect him to go in and lobby for us this year." What kind of a message does that send? I will not be voting in favor of it, because I think you're sending the wrong message to our lobbyist. If you want to review his contract, their contract later in the year, at the beginning of next year, that's fine. But right now, it's not the time to look at reviewing the lobbyist's contract. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I would just say that I respect the legislative delegation and the legislature. I just can't agree to disagree. And I don't have to roll over and take anything that they give me as like a dog with a bone. I don't have to do that, and I won't do that. And I -- that's just not the person that I am. I think people like to see someone push back a little bit. I think they like to have interest and dialogue if there's a good reason for it. And I look forward to working with the legislature. And I think we have a fine lobbyist, and I don't think we need to terminate the contract. I think we need to go forward and see how this year goes. They've only worked with us for one year, and I really think that they did a good job for us last year, and we can all work better with them.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Again, I want to reiterate that it has not to do with having to follow exact what any direction or requests are. I think that it is a strategy, and as Mr. Robinson used, I don't know what the word you used, I can't remember. But as far as just common workmanship of relationships and recognizing in the way in which we speak about our fellow board members and our fellow partners at the legislature, I don't -- my motion to terminate the contract actually has very little to do directly with the current outcome with Capital City. I think it comes more to whether we are serious about what we have on our priorities and how we take that, and what our strategies are moving forward. I will withdraw the motion. However, I do hope to see us take a very serious look in ensuring that we had a strong return on investment.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Mrs. Brown?
I would like to thank the maker and the second on that action. And I do hope that we can work a little better together, you know, and I think our boardsmanship training will help that. And I know we've got difference of opinions on things, but we all want to work forward. And you talk about we're all adults here, and we shouldn't be poking people in the eye. I would hope that our legislators are adults too, and they understand that we don't all always agree. And if we don't agree with something, because they're looking at it one way, we're looking at it another, that we can move forward too. I mean, I don't think it's black and white. We're either with our legislators or against them. We all need to be able to talk it out and to work it out, and maybe come to a consensus. Because sometimes you come to a better understanding. If there are two difference of opinions, and you can work it out. And so, I look forward to our board working together, and I know we will, because we all care about our kids.
Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to change the subject ever so briefly and tell a different note. I was appointed by this board to be on the Value Adjustment Board. And on the Value Adjustment Board, it's a school board member, two county commissioners, and then a person appointed by the school board, and a person appointed by the county commission. I've talked to Dr. Boden about this, and we keep meaning to bring this up to the board, and him and I keep forgetting to bring this up. So, the person who is our representative, I guess he got appointed back in the '90s, and no one's ever --
It wasn't in the '90s. It was in the 2000s.
He's been on there for a very long --
2008, yeah.
He's been on there for an extended period of time. He is no longer able to serve in the capacity of the Value Adjustment Board. We asked for the attorney, it was the attorney, right, for the Value Adjustment Board that sent us over a letter asking us if we can appoint somebody else. I took it upon myself, and you know, you guys can chastise me this later, looked for somebody, and it has to be -- that person has to be somebody who owns commercial property within Sarasota County. And so, and this is something I've been remiss, and I know this is going to bring a smile to Shirley's face. I was wrong. I messed up. I kept meaning to bring this up, and I was just forgetful about it. So, but I was hoping that maybe we could appoint Joe Hembry. I've already talked to him. He's a commercial realtor, and so, I'd like to make a motion that the Sarasota County School Board appoint Joe Hembry as their representative to the Value Adjustment Board.
Second. Any discussion?
I think he would be, and I know there's a very -- there's a time constraint, but what we need to be doing is advertising for someone. Of course, the last time we did, we didn't get anybody, and we had to go search. But perhaps maybe the county could help us in that advertising the next time that we do that. But I know Mr. Hembry, and I think he would be a very good addition.
Madam Chair, I'd just remind you before the vote is taken to, since this was not on the agenda, to see if anyone would like to come.
Is there anyone in the public who would be interested in commenting on this proposed Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on.
Changing.
All those in favor?
All those in favor of Mr. Hembry on the Value Adjustment Board, please say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Again, I apologize to my board for my delay in bringing this up.
Okay, Mrs. Brown?
Uh, nope, I --
You're -- okay, you're through. Mrs. Ziegler.
So, on a separate topic, and again, this is what I'd sort of say, I have not been able to get certain information, and because as a board, we only have a -- you know, only this opportunity to discuss it, the Greater Consortium of -- Greater Florida -- Greater Consortium of Florida School Boards has come up, and I know it was a discussion on our August meeting. And since then, I was trying to understand as to why we, if you recall, the concept came up, as to why we, individual board members weren't subject to statute 617.221. And it was identified by Mr. Vern Pickup Crawford that because they are not subject to that statute, because they are not under -- they are not a 501(c)(3). However, as I had done additional information, trying to understand why they would not be subject to that statute, it turns out that they are not formally incorporated to any degree. And as I asked more questions, more questions came. And so, I was hoping, since I know my fellow board members have been involved with this and have also been previously, I believe, a former -- I don't know how many of you, but some of you have been presidents, perhaps you could shed some light on to how the organization is structured and how the financial oversight of that organization, because I have not been able to find any information. And in addition, I did request the information from the current presiding president. Unfortunately, he responded back to me that he had forwarded to their superintendent and chief financial officer, and I have not heard from back from them. So, hoping that there could be some additional information shed on that.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Roy Turner is the president, right? It's Roy Terry, Terry.
Terry.
Roy, from Collier County. But as I understand it, there was some conjecture at one point, two years ago, about becoming a 501(c)(3). And the organization deemed that it wasn't important to do so, but it is a subset of -- it was 14, I think it's now 13 counties that go around the coast, from Pinellas down to Monroe County, and then back up to Indian River County. It's the coastal counties where we have about 50% of the students and 50% of the revenue and 50% of the legislators. And we all have that commonality of being the largest school districts, if you will, in terms of revenue and so forth. And what it is, is a collective organization that resides under Florida School Board Association. And it is part of that organization. Yes, it's part of FSBA. And you didn't know that?
No.
And so, I would just mention that, and I'm sure that we can get some information. I know that Erica Donalds has had questions in Collier before, so I figure that we'd have some questions here as well. But on that same note, I wanted -- I had requested to speak, because I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Ziegler on being elected to the president of the Consortium of School Board --
Shh.
The Coalition of School Board Members.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes, congratulations. Now, I guess what I think we ought to make, that question of all these school boards associations and these small ones, is the Coalition a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, we are.
And we probably ought to look at, you know, there's the small counties, there's the rural counties, central, you know. There's several different organizations. And, you know, if we're going to ask it of one, I think we probably ought to, you know, have staff ask it of all of them. And I don't know if that's through FSBA or through someone else that would know that. But, you know, or maybe the legislature, but maybe we could find out for all of them.
Mr. Robinson?
Well, I think the major difference is, is the Coalition is something that the board's a member of.
Consortium.
The consortium. Did I say -- what did I say?
Coalition.
Consortium. The FSBA and the consortium are ones that individuals are --
Coalition.
Coalition, okay. I'm just going to say, keep going consortium. I'm not going to talk about anybody else. So, we are members of so many different organizations. So, the consortium?
Yes.
Okay. The consortium, my concern is, and again, this is occupational hazard, and I'm sure Mitzi is probably the only person in the room who'll probably agree with me, hopefully. My concern is the tax return. I would like to see a copy of the last three years' tax returns of the consortium. I mean, I saw the video of the last Collier County meeting, and it scared me. It sounded like, and again, there was a lot of confusion, a lot of unanswered questions, but it sounded like they hadn't filed a tax return ever. Again, he's only been the president for one year. But my concern is, if you haven't filed a tax return ever, and you're supposed to file a tax return, what kind of tax liability does that create? And how does that flow down to us as a board? But before you can even understand that, you need to understand whether there's a tax return filed. Now, people may say, "Well, if it flows down to us individually, we don't pay taxes, so what's the issue, Eric?" Well, the issue is, is that even if you don't owe taxes, there's something called the failure to file penalty. And the failure to file penalty is $95 a month per partner. So, for one year, it would be $11,400. And so, if you haven't filed for three years, it'd be 11,400 times three, 11,400 times two, and 11,400. That's close to $60,000 in just penalties, the failure to file penalties. And so, that's twice the amount of the yearly revenue of the consortium? Can I get it right? The consortium, okay. That's twice the revenue of the consortium. And so, my concern is, is if it's a joint venture or partnership in the state of Florida, is that liability going to flow down to us individually? Or will that stay with the consortium?
My assumption, and I underline it's an assumption, so we know that what that's worth, but that the consortium is a consortium organized pursuant to State Board Rule 6A-1.099, which permits school districts to join together in consortia. I don't know that for sure. I don't know the business of the consortium. I am not and never have been their lawyer.
But you do know that that doesn't -- that has nothing to do with tax law?
I understand that that doesn't control vis a vis the Capital C code, Internal Revenue Code, and I would defer to others regarding whether a consortium that is organized under this code, this administrative code provision, is required to file tax returns. I don't know the answer to that question.
I think the first -- I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask the consortium, "Have you filed a tax return? If you have filed a tax return, can we get the last three years' tax returns?"
And I agree, as a member of the consortium, that is a request that the board could make of the consortium.
Do you think that's an unreasonable request?
No. I don't think it's an unreasonable request to seek information about an organization of which the board is a member. Now, what I don't know is if the answer is, "I haven't filed," "We haven't filed a tax return," whether that's a problem or not. I just don't --
Well, the question would be, "Do you believe you're required to file a tax return? If not, then please give us justification. If you have filed a tax return, can you please give us copies of tax returns? Is that an unreasonable request?"
I think that's a reasonable request.
Do I need to make a motion for that?
Well, I think we can --
Take care of it.
We're going to have to look into this, but I think --
Well, I'm just -- I just want to make sure I understand.
And bring it back, maybe, in January for further discussion.
I just want to understand what's happening right now. You said, "I don't need to make a motion, because you're going to take care of it."
Yes, I hear what you're saying.
We're going to put it on an agenda?
No.
No, I'm going to call Tom Sierra.
I would like to not only have that answer, but the answer of some of the other ones. So, yeah, maybe we could put it on a board agenda, but on a workshop agenda. We could discuss it further.
No, but we don't know, we don't know the answers in and of itself. So, if Caroline, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman Zucker is willing to call and to get that information, us talking amongst ourselves, I don't think it's going to -- we're not going to be able to talk amongst ourselves.
No, we're going to get information before we talk amongst ourselves.
Right, because we're not going to be able to talk amongst ourselves and generate a tax return.
Right, we can talk all we want right now, but we don't have the information to get the answers. So, let's get some of these answers and talk about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for volunteering to do that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, Mrs. Ziegler.
Just to clarify, because I think, a couple things. So, the purpose of this, how this all initiated, just to be clear, was basically on whether or not, as we voted on a legislative platform, and based on the legislation or the statute of 617.221, which allows individual constitutional officers of a board of non-profit which receives tax dollars, that you are able to opt out. That was just the genesis of where this went. And then, as I asked more questions, I was more concerned than I'd say we all, as a fiduciary overseeing the dollars of Sarasota County, if there's an exposure that has gone on for -- I couldn't tell you how, there's no documentation to articulate how long the organization has been in existence. So, that's where the concern was. If you reference other organizations, FSBA, I believe, they are filed as a 501(c)(7). You know, they're a private organization, they have their own, I mean, not private, but they, yeah, they file their own tax returns, et cetera. And same with the Florida -- oh, my gosh. The Coalition of School Board Members, sorry. All of those are separate. The difference about this one is there is no documentation to identify, which is why I thought members of each, you know, the surrounding counties would be perceived as members, and may have fiduciary exposures to a myriad of things that we just don't know about. We had heard that there were bank accounts that weren't -- they're not recognized in internal funds, they're recognized externally. And that's not a procedural, that's not a process that is a public entity, we're not allowed to process that. So, there, I don't know if anyone had, I mean, if you're familiar with the discussion that took place at Collier, but it scared me as well. And the rule that was referenced, that Mr. Hardy had referenced, Rule 6A-1.099, and I'd be happy, maybe he can send it to everyone else to reference, but I'm not involved with the consortium, so I couldn't tell you. But based on all of the questions I've asked so far, this does not comply in any way, shape, or form to that rule. So, again, I just, and I say this because I want there to be some urgency, that I'm concerned that there is a lot of unanswered questions, and it could put us as a district at risk, depending on how long this organization has been in play without properly filing paperwork or et cetera.
As far as I know, it's been in play since 1992, when I first came on the board. So, it was prior, it was before my time on the board, so probably like 30 years it's been in. Mrs. Brown?
I agree, we need to get that information, but I think some of that expanded information that I talked about, and perhaps Mr. Hardy could look at answering that question. And, you know, I'm not a tax attorney, I don't know some of those other things, but I think some of those questions, I think, might need to be officially put to whoever is running that organization. But, you know, one thing that I find is that the consortium, because as a board member, we all get the information, but we also have board members that I believe the school district pays membership fees to, the Coalition. I don't get any feedback from that. In fact, you know, I think I tried to join a couple of years ago, and I didn't get anything back on it. I would like to see their information too, and what their legislative platform is, and some of the information that they give out to their members, because we're sharing everything that we do during the legislative session. I'd like to see what, we have a member, but we haven't had any chance to give any input into their legislative platform, as the Coalition has asked the entire board to give input to. So, I would like to know what, you know, what it takes to become a member of the Coalition, and I would like to know what the Coalition legislative agenda is, and I would like to be included in the mailings, because I would imagine, I mean, it's all public record. So, I would like to be included in the mailings of this organization when they send letters out to our board members. If you could share those with us, I would appreciate that.
When the Coalition initially began, it was, membership was $49. It's now 200?
2,000.
2,000. So, it was $49, and now it's $2,000 to be a member.
How much is FSBA?
Five bucks.
Five bucks?
I don't know.
Well, I think we can get all this information and have a discussion, but in the meantime, I think, especially since session is starting, and we've seen the legislative agenda or working on, I don't know if it's finalized yet, but we've --
No, it isn't finalized for two more weeks.
We've given input into the FSBA and to the Coalition agenda. I'd like to know what the Coalition agenda is or where that is in process.
That's fair. Oh, wait a minute.
Did you cancel me?
I canceled.
I was just, I was just going to say, when this all came on the radar of Collier County was when there was a call to action that came out from the consortium about things to do in the legislature, and your organization -- in the legislature, and your organization disagreed. And that's when they started asking some questions of the consortium. And this was last session. Why are you sending out these calls to action? They were coming out of, at that time, Lee County, because the president of the consortium was from Lee County at that time, and she was sending out like every week, "Call to action, Collier Legislature, you know, legislator, do this, go against these bills and whatnot." So, that's really how it kind of started. But there is an organization all over the state of Florida that breaks down into states, small states, medium-sized. There's a group in Jacksonville that's that general area. There's a Panhandle group. There's the Central Florida Manatee, doesn't join with us, but joins with the Central Florida group, which goes over to O-Town, Orlando. So, it's all the same.
It's all the same.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Okay, I think we're blending a couple of things, so I want to break it down just from a simplicity standpoint. Happy to provide any information if we want to have a workshop in various associations. I'm absolutely happy to do so, and I would love the opportunity to share information. Again, this is not, has nothing to do with items that were on a legislative platform or a call to action. There is, in fact, legislation that had been passed that allows for individual board members to choose, based on individually being elected. They get to choose which organizations they would prefer to be a part of, and there's a, and if it had been passed, there was a collective body, board dues, that the pro-rata share would be able to pull out. That's where this all came from. And since then, I am just very concerned from the organizational structures exclusively to the consortium, because that is one of three that we pay dues to. So, that is a concern of mine. And since the board as a whole is perceived as a member, that has a unique exposure to the board and the district, which is all I'm looking for answers for.
Seeing no names on this queuing board, can I assume that there's no further discussion?
Motion to adjourn?
Our monthly work session will be October 17th at 8:30 to 2:30, 2 o'clock, I'm sorry, and a regular board meeting, October 17th at 3:00 p.m. We are adjourned.